Good morning. Welcome to the regular commissioner meeting. It's June the 26th. Time is nine o'clock. Called the order. We have with us this morning Pastor William Milan, Olivet Baptist Church for the invocation. Pastor, would you come up and turn the red light on to be the button on your right? If you just push it, it'll light the... You need to make the light come on like this.
Not yet. See, there you go.
Is it now? Okay. Shall we pray? Our Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us, and we recognize that in you we live and move and have our being. We thank you so much for the gift of life, and we pray now for the proceedings of this day. May all that is said and done be tempered with your wisdom, with your grace, and with your power. We pray for the decisions that are made, that they would be decisions that are just and right guided by your wisdom from on high. We thank you for those who are willing to serve when elected, for those who are willing to sacrifice time and effort and energy for the good of the citizens of Santa Rosa County. And I would pray your blessings upon this time. For this we pray, in the precious name of our Lord. Amen.
Commissioner Cole, will you lead us into place, please, sir?
Thank you.
We all join me, pleasingly pledge, and before we meet again in this diocese, we'll be celebrating the Fourth of July, the independence of our country. So y'all be safe and have a good Fourth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Next is approval of the minutes of the May 27, 2014 judicial facility workshop, the June 10, 2014 pre-budget workshop, and the June 12, 2014 regular meeting. Those are in the backup. Had time to review them. I recommend approval without objection. Here none there approved. Next is approval of the agenda. I'll begin on my right, Commissioner Williamson.
I have no further additions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Salt.
Mr. Chairman, under economic development, I have an information item on our site certification program.
Okay, sir.
Just information only.
Got it. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like something that I'd like to bring to the board, possibly a funding source that I'd like to ask staff to look at for stormwater management. We've all know how important that's become here lately, and I'll run that by us. We can put that in the admin.
All right. We'll make that admin number 14. Commissioner Lencard.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, one add on would be the confirmation of the chairman appointment for Commissioner Williamson. I believe it's on the number of committees and functions that his father served on.
Okay. We'll make that admin number 15. Ms. Jones, Swaylon.
Yes, we have distributed the bids for the emergency repairs for Venetian Way and Grand Canal, and that was handed out before the meeting. We'll discuss an item two in engineering.
Okay. You faded out right there at the end. You want to add that to item two?
I was just noting that we have distributed the actual bids to the board for action on number two.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gomillion, Mr. Whitfield. Everybody else, okay. All right. Next, we have proclamations. The first is for the Navarre Cert Radio Days, something we do once a year. It's a rather unique event. Santa Rosa County proclamation, whereas amateur radio operations are celebrated over a century, have celebrated over a century of the miracle of the human voice broadcast over the airwaves, and whereas amateur radio has continued to provide a bridge between peoples, societies, countries, and by creating friendships and sharing of ideas, and whereas amateur radio operators have also provided countless hours of uncompensated community services in both emergencies and to other organizations throughout these decades, and whereas the county also recognizes the services of amateur radios' people provide to our many emergency response organizations, including Santa Rosa County Emergency Management, Hollin Navarre Fire Department, Santa Rosa County Sheriff's Department, and whereas these same individuals have further demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing free radio communications for local parades, walkathons, fairs, and other events. Whereas the county of Santa Rosa recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these hams, who have also served as weather spotters and skywarn program in the U.S. government Weather Bureau, and whereas amateur radio once again provided its undisputed reverence in the modern world in 2005 by providing emergency communications and other systems when other systems failed in the devastating hurricanes of Katrina and Rita in the United States and the tsunami catastrophe overseas, and whereas the AARL is the leading organization for amateur radio in the U.S., and the ARRL Amateur Radio Field Day exercise will take place on June the 28th through the 29th, 2014, and is a 24-hour emergency preparedness exercise and demonstration of the radio amateur skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communication without further infrastructure being required. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County, do hereby proclaim June the 28th through the 29th, 2014, as Navarre Cert Radio Days in Santa Rosa County in honor and recognition of our amateur radio operators and the vital contributions they make to the safety and well-being of our citizens. Board of County Commissioners, Santa Rosa County, signed by me as chairman. And we have with us today Mr. Cipri, Ray, you here? Mike Woolley. Okay, they're all in Navarre. Doug Smith. We will get this to them. Next is a special one. It's Santa Rosa County proclamation. Whereas Tim Diamond was born and raised in Jay, Florida, and has proudly served Skyline Fire Rescue District Incorporated for 30 years as a firefighter, serving as the fire chief for the last 25 years, and whereas Chief Diamond attended Midway Fire Academy, has taught courses in the Florida Fire Chiefs Association Regional Firefighter Training Programs, the Northwest Florida Volunteer Firefighter Weekend, Florida Forestry Service, Department of Defense, and whereas Chief Diamond was selected to the State of Florida Volunteer Fire Chief of the Year in July of 2013, where he was recognized for his commitment to training firefighters throughout the state of Florida, as well as training Florida Forestry Service and Department of Defense personnel to specifically improve the knowledge of firefighter skills and their safety, and whereas Chief Diamond has been very instrumental in the development of firefighters' honor guard, so that in a time of need, his personnel are trained to provide comfort, dignity, and respect to families of lost fire department personnel. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners extends its appreciation and congratulations for a job well done, and encourages all citizens to gratefully acknowledge Chief Diamond for his many contributions to the Skyline Fire Rescue District in Santa Rosa County. From the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners, and signed by me. Chief, if you'll come up, we'd like a photo op with you, please. The button on your right will make the red light turn on. That button is cut in half in the right hand. There you go.
I'd just like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for the recognition, and Commissioner Cole for bringing it to the attention of the board and contacting me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we appreciate all you do. All right. Next, 9:30, we'll have a public hearing for three separate items. An ordinance establishing street lighting municipal service benefit unit or an MSBU for Foxborough, Diamond Creek, Longview, Pace Mill Creek, and Ashley Plantation. Then an ordinance establishing paving, water, sewer MSBU for Ponderosa subdivision, and an ordinance for establishing a subdivision improvements MSBU for Hidden Creek, and we can't start that any earlier than 9:30. We may be a little later than that, but we can't start any earlier than that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have a presentation on the Highway 90 PDNE study.
Thank you. I just blew right past that. Mr. Walker, are we going to have a presentation by the DOT or by the...
That's correct. I believe this is the... Y'all go to the podium. This is the PDNE study by Metric Engineering, who's the consulting engineering firm for DOT on this proposed study. And I believe this is really kind of the kickoff meeting.
It is, sir. Yes. I want to thank the chairman and the board members for allowing us today to come for you and make a presentation. My name is Peggy Kelly. I'm with the Florida Department of Transportation. I'm here with Amy Wee Wee from Metric Engineering. We're going to give you a brief overview of the... We have a PowerPoint to present to you on this project. It's just been really kicked off about six months ago. We're in the data collection portion of it right now. We don't have a lot of information on the corridors that we are proposing to look at, but Amy has a presentation, and I'll turn it over to her, and we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have after you look at the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you again for allowing us to come today and present this project. Peggy wanted me to go over a quick history. I know all of you are familiar with the State Road 87 Connector PDNE study. During that study, the traffic counts and the forecast reflected that US 90 was quickly nearing its capacity. Since then, as of today, there's several sections on US 90 that have already exceeded the capacity. The purpose of the 87 Connector was a regional one with hurricane evacuation, connection to Alabama, connection to Whiting, et cetera. Those are all the priorities, and the alternatives that came out of that project that will be presented at a public hearing here at the auditorium in September met all of those needs and did remove 20% of the traffic out of the historic downtown Milton area. However, the model shows that US 90 will still fail by the year 2035. So with that, the Florida-Alabama TPO and the elected officials came to DOT and requested a PDNE to study specifically the east-west corridor and a relief to the traffic demands on US 90s. So there we are today with the US 90 PDNE study. Now, the presentation I'm going to show you is the one we're going to give July 15th. Mark your calendars. I think you all should have gotten an invitation by now, but this will be the presentation that will be given at the kickoff. See if I can figure out how to work this. The presentation's going to include a quick introduction, the project limits, the scope, key issues of the projects, the timeline, and the public involvement opportunities. The study area limits are from Glover Lane at US 90 to Stair Road 87 South at US 90. This is an urban area, and again, the purpose of this project is to find an improvement for east-west capacity on US 90. There will be an additional crossing to Blackwater River. There are historic structures, and we are aware of them. We understand that the limited capacity on US 90 will continue to hinder the economic development, especially in the east Milton area. There are three phases to a study. We are currently in the ETDM phase. ETDM is Efficient Transportation Decision Making. During this phase, we coordinate with multiple agencies, DEP, Army Corps, Fish and Wildlife, elected officials, and the State Historic Preservation Office regarding project effects. We also start data collection at this phase, and obviously, we start our public involvement. This allows early identification of issues on our alternatives. The next phase will be the in-depth corridor analysis, where we study the alternatives' impacts and the traffic models. Following that will be the PDNE phase, and that's when the environmental documentation is completed. It is the intent of this process to develop an engineering solution and to minimize environmental impacts. We will be following the National Environmental Policy Act, better known as NEPA, throughout this process. The key project issues that we are aware of, we know there's historic downtown Milton with many historic structures. There are environmental concerns, limited right-of-way on US 90 as well as parallel facilities. There's engineering concerns, and public participation is always a key. That's why we do these meetings, because we need as much comment as we have, so we'll be able to develop the appropriate solution for this community. This is an illustration to reiterate the issues that we know about when it comes to historic downtown Milton. The brown-hatched area is the historic district. All of the purple graphics are possible historic structures. Here's our many environmental concerns that we have. The Blackwater River is an outstanding Florida water. The Heritage Trail, the park, the River Walk, and as you can see by the graphic at the bottom, we are in effect threading a needle through these environmental concerns on this project. Some of the engineering concerns, the dense development and constrained right-of-way along US 90, of course, optional one-way pair routing and how that will affect traffic, drainage concerns, a new structure over Blackwater, and railroad coordination. These are the potential corridors that we are looking at today. All alternatives will include improving US 90 from the bridge, from Blackwater River Bridge, to Stair Road 87 South. Alternative one also studies widening the existing US 90 through Milton. We know that this alternative will not likely perform well in this study due to the historic area and the limited right-of-way, but we must study this option nevertheless. Alternative two includes improving Old 90 as well as Hill Street and following the railroad tracks to the crossing of Blackwater River. Alternative three studies a connection at US 90 and 89, Dogwood, and continuing east, just north of TR Jackson Pre-K, connecting it with Hill and then paralleling the railroad across the river. Alternative four studies a possible one-way pair just north of Berry Hill and north of the historic district, but I do... There is a caveat. I should note that until the traffic model is done, we do not know if any of these roads are going to be two-lane, four-lane, or one-way pairs. We haven't done the traffic model yet. Stair Road 87, the plan is it will take at least 20% of the traffic off, and I don't remember, 6% or 8% of the truck traffic that's on US 90. So just a two-lane structure and some improvements to local routing may be enough to offer the relief on US 90, but we will not know until we finish the traffic model. The timeline for events, we are completing our elected official and public kickoff meetings. Our public kickoff meeting, July 15th at the auditorium. Our next meeting will be the alternatives meeting, where we start showing the public some of the effects of the alternatives, and that will be in the winter of this year, and we do expect this project to have a four-year timeline. For the public, we plan, or we already have met with several agencies, local officials, and the public. We are developing a project website. Central office tells us that July 1st, they'll have the new site online, and we will be sending out newsletters. The property owners, it looks like we have about 500 that are 300 feet from any of the corridors. We ran all of the parcel data, so those property owners and elected officials and any other interested parties will be receiving newsletters periodically with project information and pertinent facts. And at this time, Ms. Kelly and I will answer any questions, but please remember this is a kickoff. We're still in the data collection, so I don't... We don't have any results yet, so.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you. Would you please tell the board why the southern, basically the bridge that we talked about this morning is not one of the possibilities on this?
I will. It wasn't offered up because we originally met with Federal Highway, and the southern alignments that we had originally proposed for the 87 Connector were eliminated because we were impacting Florida Forever lands that were purchased with DEP funds through the state. The lands were owned by the Water Management District, but they deferred off to DEP, and DEP had disputed us crossing. They said that they were, you know, important environmental resource, and with NEPA, if you have another alternate that will take it out of that area and not impact it, you must avoid, according to the NEPA. So we did have three other alternatives to the north. So we spoke with Federal Highway, and at that point in time, he said, "No, because it was eliminated, and it appears you're trying to back into your old project," and he said, "You can't do that because you're not avoiding. You're directly going back in and trying to impact those lands again, knowing you can't." So we are, based off our conversation, we'll be glad again to speak to Federal Highway to see if we can add that alignment, but we'll have to get back with you and let you know what comes from that, and then we'll be, you know, set up meetings and stuff with you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to put these ladies on the spot, but I am trying to raise awareness to all our public of what we've actually created somewhat of a monster in the fact that we're trying to protect lands for our environmental and future through Florida Forever, through the Department of Environmental Protection, and water management. We've created somewhat of a monster in the fact that we can't go across these lands now for future public usage, and I've got a bit of a problem with that. Although we mean well and intend well for these purchases when we make them, there's no caveats in there for the necessity of the people that you and I as public citizens that have shelled out our tax dollars to buy these lands for future purposes of transportation and kind of painting ourselves in a corner, basically. And I'd like this board to be aware of that. I'd like our citizens to be aware of that, because I don't think it's right. When our tax dollars are spent to buy property, and somewhere in the future, whether it be immediate or 10 years down the line, or 20 years down the line, there's a necessity from the public that bought that land for transportation, safety improvements, corridors that we only know will increase, to be, you know, told, "No, you can't build there." We take into consideration our historic, so I feel like we need to talk to our legislators, talk to the governor, even talk to Congressman Miller about making sure, and I feel as a board, we should make sure in the future as we buy these lands, that there's a caveat in those contracts that says if those lands are needed for public necessity, that they just can't say no. We've got to start working together on these things, so. And I'll be working more with these folks on that.
Mr. Lencard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for the presentation this morning. I really appreciate it. And you mentioned a four-year timeline to completion. I just want to make sure and clarify for everyone watching or in the audience, that's four years to complete the PDNE study. We're not going to be out there cutting the ribbon on a new road four years from now.
That is correct. That is correct. Thank you.
This is the PDNE study that will be completed in four years. After that comes right-of-way acquisition and everything else.
We go into design, and then right-of-way, and then construction. Just to add to what we were speaking to earlier with Commissioner Cole and the board, if for some reason we are allowed to put this southern alignment back on, it will escalate the study up from an environmental assessment to an environmental impact statement, which will add at least two to three more years to the project study because of all the rigors of going back and forth with the agency that has the adjudication over the property. DEP does not go down easily, so.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Thank you for the presentation. We look forward to the...
Thank you. We appreciate you giving us this opportunity.
Yes. We look forward to the rest of your work product.
Thank you.
We will go ahead and open, let's see, economic development. Mr. Salt.
Mr. Chairman, here again, I have an information only, but I'm glad I did, because it kind of pigtails on what we were talking about on Highway 90 and the limitations it's going to have on economic development in east Milton. Several months ago, Guff Power Company, working with communities across the service territory, started a program, industrial park site certification. Each community worked to identify certain industrial lands that may qualify for a potential site consultant certification program. Santa Rosa County, we ended up with four different sites. Two of them are public, two of them are private. Guff Power Company announced yesterday that those sites will now start being promoted by the company on their webpage through other marketing initiatives. So the site certification program is making progress, and we should get some good coverage, good publicity for the industrial lands and... Without a site certification of this quality, they won't even make a phone call. It's almost 9:30, but almost doesn't count. We'll go ahead and start the administrative committee, and we'll interrupt that and deal with the, with the public hearing at 9:30. Item number one is recommend leasing the former Environmental Health Building to the Healthy Start Coalition of Santa Rosa County Incorporated for office space. Details are in your backup. It's pretty straightforward, less discussion with the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I don't have necessarily an objection, but I do have some questions if any-
Yes, sir.
-representative from maybe-
I think we have someone here that might be able to handle your questions. Yes, sir, you have the floor, Commissioner.
Thank you.
My name's Martha Zimmerman. I'm the executive director for the Healthy Start Coalition.
Okay, it was a pleasure meeting you, and I don't want you to, I'm not picking on you, and I know the importance of nonprofits, profits to the community. And actually, my wife went to intern for a nonprofit right out of college and then got a job with them and has continued, went to work for a government agency and then back to the nonprofit. So, I understand the importance, but I just had a couple of questions. How many people are on staff with Healthy Start?
On staff is three.
Okay. And those are three, is it full-time positions?
It's two and a half full-time, one part-time, and then we contract accounting services.
Okay.
And they come to the office once a week.
And the purpose of, I looked over the website a little bit, and you go to the Health Department, I guess for like screenings or checkups and such?
The Coalition itself is an administrative function for all the maternal and child health dollars that come from the state and federal government, and we do all the monitoring. We do not provide the direct services. The Health Department, we contract in this county with the Health Department to provide those services, and they do an outstanding job, and we have a very good working relationship with them. We do have to go do chart monitorings at the Health Department at least quarterly.
In the Health Department, if you had three staff, did they not have any room to facilitate what you need, and then the people would actually already be on-site for any kind of visits they have at the Health Department?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
The administrator of the Health Department says no.
I just had some questions because it's about a 3,000-square-foot building, I believe, so I was just wanting to know what your staffing was and kind of how it worked out, so I appreciate you answering those questions.
Certainly. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, no question, but I found it interesting to read the backup. A lot of people don't realize this, but in Santa Rosa County in the year 2013, there were 1,797 new babies born. That's a lot of little new residents.
It's a bunch of folks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, I recommend approval without objection. Here and now it passes. The time now is, looks like it's about 9:33. Let's drop back and do the public hearing so we can move on. This is opening a public hearing for the purpose of considering the ordinances that is read earlier. The first one is an ordinance establishing street lighting municipal service benefit unit or an MSBU for Foxborough, Diamond Creek, Longview, Pace Mill Creek, and Ashton Plantation. The backup is in your, backup material is in your book. Are any questions from the commission or questions from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East in Milton. Is there a cost to the taxpayers for these services that are going to be provided?
No, these aren't municipal service benefit unit projects. The homeowners in these particular subdivisions will be assessed for the lighting, and there's no cost to the taxpayer. This is just a funding mechanism. They're assessed on their taxes, on their tax bill for this direct benefit that they receive.
So, this is lighting-
And it's going to be all three of these ordinances. These are, there's no public money in there.
So, this is lighting that you're putting up in areas, and the people that are living there are actually going to pay for it?
Guff Power will actually put the lighting up. All we're, the county is serving as a funding mechanism through the assessment process, which is, that's what an MSBU is. And then they'll pay for that on a annual basis.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Cantu, these subdivisions have asked-
Right.
-for this MSBU to be imposed to fund their lighting. This is something that they've asked for.
Yeah, I was just concerned whether there was any cost from the taxpayer or on the taxpayer's point.
Only the taxpayers that have asked for it, within that particular subdivision.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, back to the MSBU for Foxborough, Diamond Creek, Longview, Pace Mill Creek, and Ashton Plantation. Move approval without objection. Here and now it passes. The next is an ordinance establishing paving, water, and sewer MSBU for Ponderosa subdivision. As noted by the question from Citizen Prior, this expense will be borne by the citizens that are requesting the service. I recommend approval without objection. Here and now it passes. Item number three is an ordinance establishing subdivision improvements MSBU for Hidden Forest subdivision, and again, the requesting taxpayers to be the only ones bearing these costs. And I recommend approval without objection. Here and now it passes. That closes the public hearing. We'll go back to the administrative committee. We're on item number two. Item number two is discussion of a request from Milton Aviation Partners to amend the current lease to include additional property for expansion. Mr. Walker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, is, I met yesterday, Ms. Jones and I met with senior partner of Peter Prince Aviation, and quite frankly, is, I think we can, it was a little hard to follow in the schematic that was in the packet, but they are asking for an expansion to their current lease. They've got some pretty ambitious expansion plans in the next, I believe, five years that he had mentioned to me. So, what the action would be today would just be to direct staff to work with Prince, Peter Prince Aviation Center on an agreement and bring it back to you. I believe there does need, and we were talking to Prince Aviation yesterday, Peter Prince Aviation yesterday, is that there needs to be some kind of consideration for this additional property. It's not going to be enough property that the county could potentially lease to somebody else, but it will have some value also with FAA. We need to be sure that we can reflect that we're responsibly leasing their property. So, if you'll just empower us to come back to you with a proposed amended lease.
Okay. Any discussion from the board? Okay. I recommend approval without objection. Here and now it passes. You'll just bring that back when it's ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Item number three is recommend Emerald Coast Utilities Authority ECUA Resolution 14-06 and Source Separated Recyclables Loading and Transportation Agreement for Recyclable Collection Transportation Program. That's item number three on your agenda. Details are in the back, in the backup. Questions from the board? Comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Salter.
Just for clarification, I'd like for Mr. Walker to explain to everyone how this is going to work in the north end of the county. How will people go about getting their recyclables to this location?
The agreement with ECUA is they're essentially going to use our current transfer station that's located on the, for our recycling center, formal recycling center that's on the landfill for their transfer station. So, they will, they will bring little trucks and make big trucks, and they'll go, send the recycled material off to processing center. That will also include the recycling material that's collected. At this point, primarily curbside in the south end on your two franchise areas, and in the north end, there are a number of our current volunteer providers that provide that service. Those trucks would be brought to this, this particular location. So, we still have, we don't propose to reopen the drop-off sites. You can still drop off recyclables at the, the landfill has a center in, at the entrance to the landfill, and then there's the J Transfer Station, and those can be brought by citizens if they don't choose to do the curbside recycling through their vendor. As we go through the process of granting a franchise in the north end of the county, then I would expect that curbside recycling will be a part of that requirement, the same as it is in the south end, and then that way, people will just, again, will receive the 96-gallon cart for recycling, one for garbage, and then those will be brought to the same location, and they'll be, they'll be transported to the processing center, which is, I understand, is in Montgomery.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this new agreement does contain that 90-day opt-out where if they do not meet our needs or wants, that we have that? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's included, of course. It's also included that they may opt-out upon 90 days' notice.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I recommend we're still dealing with the ECUA issue. Item number three, I recommend approval without objection. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Step forward.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton. Have you considered requesting people who sell a lot of things in the county to be responsible for recycling, collecting materials and recycling them? For instance, large companies like Walmart, other places that have large numbers of like items that they could recycle themselves? Is that something that you can do?
We have your comments from Monday, and the staff has that under consideration. They'll at some point make a recommendation. I don't know how they would, how that would work or be accommodated. Commissioner Cole?
Ms. Cantu, I think if you ever drive behind like a Walmart or any of the larger stores, you'll see they already containerize their cardboard.
That's why I asked, yeah.
You know, so they see the value of it, and they're already doing that. So, I wouldn't see a necessity in us trying to encourage that with them because, like you say, they're already doing it.
Well, for instance, you know, things like feed bags. I buy a lot of dog food, horse food, and stuff like that. A lot of the bags could be recycled very easily, probably by Tractor Supply that I happen to buy from. Things like the water containers, plastic stuff that, you know, is, the material is wrapped in. Those little container-type things that, on a six-pack of drinks or whatever, the little plastic thing that's so bad for fish and wild, marine wildlife, things like that could be collected on a concentrated basis, make it easier for animals and the public and so forth.
I think it's going to rely on the individual to be more conscious of that. I wouldn't see how you can really enforce or ask a store to collect those. I did like your idea the other day of investigating maybe some, you know, deposits on bottles like, you know, we used to have, but I think when you get down into the weeds on some of these things, you know, like those rings and stuff, it's pretty much just going to be educating the public and making citizens more responsible for that.
But we could also ask the businesses to be more responsible for helping to collect the material that ends up as a problem for wildlife. My thoughts. Thank you.
And we agree with you. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate you. Yes, sir. Tim, you're going to have to turn your red light on. There you go.
I'm with you now. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Tim Hague with the Emerald Coast Utilities Authority. We, as I expressed on Monday, are happy to be a partner with a county in this program. One thing I do want to request is our board will be considering this issue this afternoon at their board meeting, which begins at 2:00. I would like to request that Mr. Walker or Ms. Jones provide the ECUA attorney with the document that is approved by this board or is acted on by this board today, so we can take the document to our board and present that to them.
Okay.
So, I understand there were one or two issues that were still outstanding, and I trust the county attorney will or may be able to address those issues, and we look forward to working with you and finalizing this agreement.
Ms. Jones.
Your attorney has our final document, which was approved this morning, but we can certainly get you a signed copy before your meeting today.
That would be very helpful.
I'll scan and email it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Okay, I recommend approval of item number three without objection. Here and now it passes. Item number four, recommend proposed job description for the tourist development director position for advertisement by the Human Resources Department. Details are in the backup. I've reviewed those. I trust you have as well. It's pretty straightforward. I recommend approval without objection.
Mr. Chairman, I want-
Yes, sir, please.
I'm going to object. I still feel like, I know this position's needed, but I still have a problem with bringing it under the, as a new position as a county employee.
Okay. So, we have an objection, so I need a motion for number four, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Salter.
Recommend proposed job description for tourist development director position for advertisement by the Human Resources Department, as presented.
Hey, I need a second.
Move approval?
I have a, I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by raising your right hand, please. Pose same sign. Nice have it. Item number four has been passed with-
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a couple of comments?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
We'll go ahead and get that advertised, probably starting Monday. I'll probably get with Kate on some of the tourist-related websites to place this on. We'll do it on the Fact website, the, our own website, and we just need some of the trade journals or websites that focus on the tourist industry in that regard. We'll come back to you at your first meeting in July with at least an organizational structure. I agree with Commissioner Williamson. He mentioned the, we'll do a 30-day or probably full week, whatever we can work it out that it ends on a Friday. We will do that kind of a solicitation as opposed to a three-week that we had mentioned. I'm a little, August 1st coming in a hurry, so we just need to get this, somebody needs to start advertising for that and get the, that process. And then we're going to have to somehow talk about how the TDC is potentially involved in this recruitment process, and I'm not sure how that's going to, how that's going to work, and Kate and I will have to talk about that, and I'll probably have to meet with those, those people to just see how that can effectively work. I'm not sure.
Okay, well, we'll work those details, but we'll get started. Ma'am, we'll work those details. So, we have had a motion without objection, which was objected to, and then we had a vote, and the issue passes with Williamson, Salter, Melvin, and Lynch voting yea, Commissioner Cole voting no.
Mr. Chairman.
And passes, Commissioner Cole.
Staff's developing this. I'd like to see a cost analysis done on this for the board as far as what it will cost for the additional employees of the county, including benefits, and not just this one director position, but whatever staff is anticipated being on there also.
Yeah, I believe there are three, I think there are three positions that would currently be transitioned. Sure, we can do that. Okay, thank you. All right, item number five is recommend the staff initiate a state of Florida permitting process for dredging areas adjacent to Oriole Beach Boat Ramp based on public safety concerns-
I'd, I'd like to see a cost analysis done on this for the board as far as what it will cost to, for the additional employees of the county, including benefits and, and not just this one director position, but whatever staff is anticipated being on there also.
Yeah, I believe there are three, I think there are three positions that would currently be, be transitioned. Sure, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Item number five is recommend the staff initiate a state of Florida permitting process for dredging areas adjacent to Oriole Beach Boat Ramp based on pay, public safety concerns. Mr. Blaylock, do you brief this or?
I can. We had a request from the Midway Fire Department to launch their, their, their boat at the Oriole Beach Boat Ramp. They're having difficulty with their new boat and even their existing boat. And so they've asked, in the past, this has been issues with the seagrasses in this bed. So it's, it's anticipate being a lengthy process and would note that the, the, the feds, federal permit would, would accompany this permit as well.
Okay. Any comments from the board? I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number six is recommend the request from the Magnolia Center for a management agreement of the McAllister Park adjacent to the Magnolia Cemetery. Very worthwhile project and it's ministerial in nature. You have the backup before you. I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number seven is recommend social media, digital marketing policies and procedures as recommended by the public information officer and the county attorney. They've just gone over these and streamlined them, did what they felt necessary. Details are in your backup. I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number eight is recommend the annual renewal of the contract with the Florida Coalition Against Domestic Violence for the domestic violence program. Again, that material's available on your backup. I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number nine is recommend the scheduling quarterly, recommend scheduling quarterly Board of County Commissioner and zoning board meetings at the Tiger Point Community Center effective with the response, respective meetings starting Thursday, August the 14th of 2014. And with the caveat that was added about the feedback problems, et cetera, we'll need to work on those. But I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number 10 is recommend the resolution establishing tentative rates for 2014, 2015 municipal, municipal service benefit unit projects, the MSBU projects. That, those, that data is in your backup. I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number 11 is recommend the employment agreement with Roy Andrews for county attorney position effective August the 4th, 2014. Again, that document is in your backup. Unless there's discussion, I recommend approval without objection. Yes, Ms. Cantu, please.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton. If you'll bear with me, I'd rather read this so I get what I want to say. A county attorney who has argued for import and storage of hazardous material close, in close proximity to the aquifer would be less likely to serve the voters of Santa Rosa County. I therefore object to his being hired as the county attorney.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. We appreciate your input. I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number 12 is recommend the resolution authorizing continuing support of an application for Florida Department of Transportation TRAP grant for design and construction of King Middle School sidewalk project developed by the city of Milton. Those details are in your backup. Unless there's discussion or questions, I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number 13, the administrative committees, unless otherwise noted, they're listed on, below be held in the boardroom of Santa Rosa County Administrative Center. They're lengthy, they're posted online. And for those of you present in the audience that would like to have a copy, we'll make one available for you to close the meeting. I recommend approval of those meetings and times as advertised before you now without objection. Here none passes. Item number 14 is, is an add on by Commissioner Cole. Commissioner Cole?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In, in light of all, all that we've been through in the last few months as a county, the heartache and the suffering that quite a few of our citizens have had to endure, I believe it's past time that we find a fun, funding source to protect our citizens and their property values. The problem I'm speaking of, we're all aware of, is the torrential rains that we've had. And I appreciate Commissioner Lynchard having the town hall meeting, addressing this. And, and we've heard from a lot of our citizens, our public works department has done an outstanding job in, in trying to help with recovery of that. You know, I've seen an all out 100% effort from all our staff to, to get our county back in, in line. But we have yet to address a funding source for that. And I'd like to suggest the board, it was brought to my attention by Edwin Henry, the construction that's going on in this county. We've got an industry in this county and we support economic development, but we have an industry called the housing and a construction industry that we really don't put dollars into, but it brings a lot of dollars into, into the county coffers. I'd like to suggest that we look at as, as homes are built, especially on our peninsula, but perhaps the entire county. You, and I'm just going to use an example. You take a, a piece of property that today has worth $200 because it's a vacant piece of property, and within a few months, a contractor, somebody, you know, a home builder or even individual places a house on it, and now that has escalated to being worth, let's say $2,000 or $1,500 in value. My suggestion would be that we take from, from the difference, and I'm just going to use 2,000 and 200 for an example. We subtract the 200 from the 2,000 because that's money already going into county coffers, leaving $1,800. And then this board worked with staff to develop a portion of that $1,800 that would go directly into a pot that would be set aside for stormwater runoff and solutions for stormwater runoff. Those dollars can be used to pay a bond issue if we decided to move forward. They can be saved and used for matching funds. But unless we start articulating some sort of funding source for this, the problem's only going to escalate on us and we're going to continue not to have that source of revenue. Just a suggestion, and I'd like to hear from the rest of the board as far as what they think or if they have any other plans that, that could coincide with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Commissioner Lynchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Cole, for bringing that up. I think, you know, right now we have ongoing the Stormwater Master Plan for Holly by the Sea. Once that is done, the, the end result of that plan is going to be a list of, of projects and a rough estimate of costs associated with those projects. Again, that's one small area of the county, but that was the first step in developing this stormwater plan. And we'll, after this is complete, we'll be able to move on to the other areas that, that are prone to flooding. But that will give us an idea of the scope of the problem we're facing in terms of financial responsibility for, or the, the magnitude of the, the cost of the stormwater projects, at least in that particular area. So then we'll know what we're going to need, what it's going to take to, to, to take care of it. And I think at that point we'd be able to explore alternatives. I don't know if, you know, an incremental, that's kind of like a, a tiff for the, a tax increment financing for the entire county. I don't know if that's going to generate enough money to, to, to fund these types of projects because they are so expensive. You know, other counties have stormwater utilities, they have impact fees, they have MSBUs for stormwater projects. So there, there are any number of ways to pay for it. I think we've been successful in the past with HMGP projects where we have to match 25% and FEMA pays 75%. We've, we've completed about $5 million worth of those projects in the last three years alone. So I agree that we need to start planning long-term. I don't know that we have enough information at this point to really plan that, but we will once we get that stormwater plan, or stormwater management plan done.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Salter.
I agree, we need to look at it. We need to have a long range of plans, but I agree with Commissioner Lynchard that we, we started the stormwater planning process a few months back. We need to be very careful about looking at taking any type of revenue out of the new construction, money, taxes, because that's our main source of our annual budget. If you take away from that, then you're going to be taking away from somebody else somewhere. So the concept might appear to be good, but we need to be real careful about new construction because after the referendums were approved in the state of Florida a few years ago, we're very limited on how we can generate revenue and new constructions our main source.
Commissioner Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Commissioner Cole brings up a good point for future funding sources, but I also agree with Commissioner Lynchard that if there's already some ongoing, that we're looking into this at the Holly by the Sea area, we need to see some exact figures and, and some more exact numbers before we can make an educated choice on the matter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you. And this was information only and we'll take this under advisement as we move forward in time. Commissioner Cole, one last comment.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And, and that's kind of the crux of it. I'm just trying to get the ball rolling in some direction because the studies are going to take a year and a half to two years. And I, I, I agree, we need to know the amount, but I also disagree that we need to, we know how long it takes to implement different things. We know it's going to be multi-millions of dollars to, to correct some of this. So how many other citizens are we going to have in peril until that? So I, I'd just like to start conversation here at the board as, as those studies are proceeding, I think the Board of Commissioners, it's only good for us to, to talk and get this moving, consider other ways, bring other ideas to the board that we could look at. I think it's sooner rather than later that we should start basically putting money away.
Ms. Cantu, if you have comments, please step forward.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton. Don't you have engineers that have to approve when somebody gets a permit for building? They can help you with a lot of the information that you're looking for. To me, it, it doesn't make sense to, to think we can continue doing what we're doing if we're getting flooding where we haven't had flooding before. There must be something that we're doing wrong or maybe something that we could do more right. Doesn't make sense. I've heard it explained that we've had a 100-year flood or a 200-year flood or a 500-year flood. And I really think that it's just because we're doing things, we're, we're making the water go somewhere that it had never gone before. People get used to saying, well, you know, it never flooded here before, so I can build here and not have a problem. And I don't think that's true anymore because there are things that we're doing that make the water go somewhere that causes the flooding. And I think that's what we need to do and use your engineers for, you know, what you're paying them for. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Wallace Mahoot, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I think, I, I agree with what Sandra said. I think if you can start at the source. I've heard people come up from the south end of the county and say they're, a new development went in just next to me and now my property is flooding. So that, that's kind of a clue, I think, to, to maybe start at the very beginning with whoever is putting in that development. Because this is, is happening so often, engineering departments should be able to figure out why this is happening. And then if, if you start from the beginning, figure out the problem, make sure there's enough sewage for the water to go to, I, I think maybe it would cost less in the future to take a look at, at the beginning process. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And the staff is looking at those issues now. We've talked about the problem of an empty lot being elevated by a builder and it creates a problem, or one before. That poses some legal problems as well as just the logistical problems, but staff has that under advisement. Item number 15 is an add-on by Mr. Walker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. These are your appointments to, for Commissioner Williamson, which includes the Bay Area Resource Council. He will join Commissioner Cole as the two members from Santa Rosa County. The Juvenile Justice Group, uh, group of, which is now, I think, called the Family Law Group would be the other appointment. Obviously, the, he's already by, by virtue of being a county commissioner, he'll be on the Florida Alabama TPO. He's, the, the appointment would also be as the alternate to Commissioner Melvin as the, on the tourist development council. And then the final one is the Board of Commissioners appointee to the West Florida Regional Planning Council.
And that reflects basically you just assuming your father's duties. Okay. I recommend approval of the new committee assignment for Commissioner Williamson without objection. Here none passes. Item number next is the Engineers Report. Mr. Blaylock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is we recommend the bid in the amount of $390,353.35 from Brown Construction of Northwest Florida Inc. for option A of the Pine Blossom Road Drainage Repair Project as low bidder meeting specifications.
I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes.
Item number two is a discussion of the Grand Canal washouts. We received quotes yesterday afternoon and, or yesterday morning, I should say, and we distributed the bid tab for those two projects. We'll start with Grand Canal because it's item one, and I would defer to Ms. Jones with a, a request that's been made for the apparent low bidder.
You will see that the apparent low bidder is Three Trade Consultants. I can tell you that Three Trade has requested that its bid be withdrawn. That bid does come with a bid bond, okay? And it is at your discretion whether you would like to take action on that bid bond and essentially hold Three Trades to its bid.
What was, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The alternative would be to allow them to withdraw and award the contract to utility services, the second apparent low bidder. Certainly if we take action on the bid bond of Three Trades and if you will, hold their feet to the fire or take action on the bond, we will slow this project down and you should be aware of that. This is an open ditch. Our, our consultant, Ann Paulson, has recommended that there is some urgency to the project. So it's at your discretion, but those are your options.
Appreciate it. And then, then we'll take it up here with the board in just a minute. But if contractors made a mistake, identified the mistake and, and wishes to pull their bid, I don't think we ought to do anything punitive, but that's my personal opinion. Commissioner Lynchard, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if we could, we'll take these items separately. Let's award, or not, Grand Canal before we move on to discuss Venetian Way because I think we're going to have some more discussion about that. The, as, as Ms. Jones said, the project is very important. There's a sense of urgency with this project. It's one of the washout areas. So rather than go through a protracted process of, of having to enforce a bid bond, I would recommend allowing Three Trades to withdraw their bid and awarding the contract to utility services company as the low bidder meeting specifications once Three Trades is withdrawn. And will this be with the additive?
Yes, would recommend we have the additive alternate as a contingency should we, should the need arise. We're still working with risk management, insurance and those sorts of things, but if all that fails, then we will have to remove the material.
And have they given an, an estimated time to complete the work?
Not yet. I don't have that right here, but we will work that out in the contract details.
Commissioner Lynchard, do you make that form of a motion without objection?
I did, unless there's anyone here to discuss this particular item without objection.
Okay. Discussion of the board. Commissioner Williams?
I just have a question. Do we have any kind of policies that say, for instance, somebody does this multiple times? That there, there's anything? I, I, my line of work is that I do a lot of bidding for jobs and sometimes it's just the cost of doing business that you, you bid something and you missed it. In this instance, we'd be affecting people's lives because it's a washout. In mine, I would, I would just be losing, losing money. It wouldn't affect somebody's life. So I can understand that difference. But do we have a policy where if somebody in multiple times, two times, three times, comes to us where they're not allowed to bid on these projects if it becomes something that, that happens often? I don't know if they've ever done this before. I'm just asking for future reference.
It, it certainly doesn't happen often, but obviously if you had, i- i- if it were to be a repetitive situation, and it doesn't take many repeats of, of something like this that you- you would, I think the Board would probably, we would bring back to the Board that they would be excluded from. In this case, it would be Three Trades. Now, they're a good firm. I'm just saying that if that were repetitive, I think the Board, we would bring back the recommendation that they be excluded because of that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We have a motion without objection, and I move approval without objection. Here, none passes. Now, that was just the Grand Canal. So item number two is Venetian Way.
Item number two is Venetian Way. We do have an apparent low bidder, but we also have a discussion from one of the property owners across from the canal as it relates to easements and had made specific discussion with the attorney. And I'll again flip it to Ms. Jones to further brief the Board.
Property owner in the neighborhood focused me or alerted me yesterday to the fact that he doesn't believe we have secured proper easements for this project. Now, I've not run that to ground yet, but certainly will. I would suggest that if the Board is inclined to award this project today, it do it with the caveat that the notice to proceed not be issued in the contract, not finalized until we have nailed down our access and easement issues.
Okay. That's commonsensical to me. We'll take that as an amendment to the Venetian Way that is pending verification of our right-of-way, et cetera, as stated by the county attorney. I recommend approval without objection.
Anyone here to speak on this?
Okay, see none, hear none, and I move approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number three is recommend change order number one to the contract with Pensacola Concrete Construction Company in the amount of $26,561.19 and additional 81 days for the Navar Beach Water Main Rehabilitation Project. I'm sorry, Mr. Engineer, I just read it for you, but do you have anything to add to that?
Do not, sir.
Okay. Recommend approval without objection. Here, none passes.
Item number four, we recommend the preliminary plat for Martinique Place. This is a 28-lot subdivision located in Working District Five.
Okay. Discussion of the Board. Recommend approval without objection. Here, none passes.
Item number five, we recommend the preliminary plat for Winfield. This is a 59-lot subdivision. It is located in Working District One.
Okay. Ms. Cantu, did you have a question about what's going on? Please come forward.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton. The only thing that I would add is just making sure that all of these other improvements or, what do you call them, subdivisions are looked at critically by the engineers to make sure that there's no problem with drainage.
We have that as part of their checklist and the study of the hydrology and everything. That's, that's, that's in there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, we're dealing with item number five.
Yes.
Okay. Details from the backup. I recommend approval without objection. Here, none passes.
And item number six, we recommend the construction plans for Martinique Place, the 28-lot subdivision in Working District Five.
Discussion of the Board. I recommend approval without objection. Here, none passes.
Item number seven, we're recommending the construction plans for the Winfield subdivision, the 59-lot subdivision in Working District One.
Discussion of the Board. I recommend approval without objection. Here, none passes.
And that concludes the Engineers' Report.
Public Services Committee, Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is recommend amended agreement with Casidian Communications, Inc., expanding the capacity of our emergency call notification system. And I will move approval without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item two, recommend submission of application for Florida Division of Emergency Management Citizen Core Grant in the amount of $13,000 with match requirement provided through in-kind services. Move approval without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item three, recommend renewal of the vehicle lease agreement with Pensacola Bay Transportation for four vans used for the door-to-door public disadvantaged transportation program. Move approval without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item four, recommend 2014 Escambia Consortium Annual Action Plan for Housing, including the home program funding in the amount of $143,650 and authorize chairman to sign all related documents. I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item five, recommend bid in the amount of $13,500 for ship program emergency repairs to structure located at 5439 Tom Sawyer Road as the lowest bidder, including approval to exceed the emergency repair program limit of $10,000, and I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
And item six is recommend acceptance of $1,000 for short sale in lieu of foreclosure for the property located at 6942 Cedar Ridge Road, and I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
And that concludes Public Services.
Thank you, sir. Public Works Committee, Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I haven't passed initiation yet because y'all haven't allowed me to have anything on my committee. I have nothing today. Thank you.
You'll rue that comment one day. All right. Item, the last item would be the Budget Finance Committee, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is recommend a bid in the amount of $17,723 for Hub City Ford Incorporated for the replacement of one half-ton pickup truck for building maintenance as low bidder meeting specification. Do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item two is recommend bid in the amount of $29,510 each from Mackenzie Buick GMC for replacement of three one-ton, 15-passenger vans, one for parks, and two for Roan Bridge as low bidder meeting specification. Do so without objection. Ms. Cantu, did you have a question?
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East in Milton. I went through all the requisitions or requests for vehicles, and I found that there are a total of $608,000 requested for vehicles. Roan Bridge had a request for 13 vehicles. Animal Control had requests for two vehicles, pretty high price. My question is, how many total vehicles do they have? And how often do they replace them? And do we have the money for $608,000 worth of vehicles?
Ms. Cantu, the money is already in the budget for those, and I don't, I think you know my, my, my vocation, I guess, or my, you know, I'm an auto mechanic by trade. I've looked at these. They're, the ones that are being replaced are thoroughly wore out. So we can't expect our, you know, employees to, you know, be broke down alongside the road with some of these. So we get, we squeeze all we can out of the vehicles before we replace them. And then again, we go out for bid to get the lowest price we can through government bid process.
And a suggestion that I have, a lot of times, you can make up a customized trailer. And the one that I thought of particularly was for Animal Control. Rather than attaching the box thing to the back of the vehicle, attach it to a trailer, and then you have freedom to move or to pull that trailer with any kind of vehicle that you want, usually one that's smaller than what you would require otherwise. And I wondered if that had been considered because to me, it would seem like a lot less expensive to do that.
We've explored that in the past, and we, in fact, we do have some trailers for larger stock. However, with a separate body, in other words, pulling a trailer.
Right.
The kennel part of that vehicle has to be air-conditioned, and so you would have an ability to air-condition a trailer. It'd be a lot harder, a lot more expensive. And then you'd have the wear and tear on two, a trailer and a truck, and then you'd also have licensing and insurance. So I think overall, we're doing it as best we can. I also questioned the other day the Animal Control because of the cost of the box on the back.
Right.
And this particular one we're replacing is a fiberglass one. As the fiberglass is stressed and cracked, you well know that it'll, you know, there's cracks in the fiberglass that'll contain germs. They can't be cleaned very well. This, this box here, the reason we're not transferring it to another, just a chassis, is because this is one of the last fiberglass boxes we have, and what we're going to is stainless steel that in the future, we'll be able to buy just a chassis and have our Public Works Department transfer that body or have an independent contractor transfer and upgrade that body because it is stainless steel, not fiberglass.
Well, I wondered about the air conditioning, and I know I've looked at getting an air conditioner for my horse trailer, and I know they, they do make them, and I didn't know whether that would be an alternative for you.
Yeah. It is, but we've explored that, and this, this is more reasonable to have the one piece of equipment rather than two.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay. Recommend item number two for approval without objection.
Yes, sir.
All right. Here, none is approved.
Item three, recommend bid in the amount of $26,746 from Jarrett Ford, Jarrett Gordon Ford for the replacement of one three-quarter-ton crew cab pickup truck for the service body for Roan Bridge as the low bidder meeting specification. I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item four, recommend bid in the amount of $26,400 each from Hub City Ford Incorporated for replacement of three three-quarter-ton crew cab, four-wheel-drive pickup trucks for Roan Bridge as low bidder meeting specification. I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item five is recommend bid in the amount of $20,510 from Hub City Ford Incorporated for replacement of one half-ton four-wheel-drive pickup truck for engineering as low bidder meeting specification. I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item six is recommend bid in the amount of $18,981 from Jarrett Gordon Ford for replacement of one half-ton pickup truck for mosquito control as low bidder meeting specification. I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item seven is recommend bid in the amount of $20,890 from Hub City Ford Incorporated for replacement of one half-ton four-wheel-drive pickup truck for mosquito control as low bidder meeting specification. Do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item eight, recommend bid in the amount of $45,184 from Hub City Ford Incorporated for replacement of one three-quarter-ton pickup truck outfitted with Animal Control Unit Body for Animal Services as low bidder meeting specification. I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item nine is recommend rejection of bids received for compact pickup trucks for public services and rebid the request. I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item 10 is recommend budget amendment 2014-139 in the amount of $304,000 to carry forward funds in the General Fund for Design Services for Proposed Judicial Facility as approved at the August 8, 2014 meeting. Do so without objection.
Do you have a question regarding this particular?
It's the date.
I'm sorry.
It says August 8.
August 8, 2014, we discussed this and moved it forward.
13.
14.
13. That's the typo.
Yes.
Okay. Here, none, it passes.
All right. All right. Good catch. Thanks, Ms. Cantu. Item number 11, recommend bid amendment in the amount of two, bid amendment, budget amendment, 2014-140 in the amount of $13,500 to carry forward funds in the General Fund for Evaluation of the Site in Downtown Milton for the, for the location of a proposed judicial facility as approved at the June 12, 2014 meeting. I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item number 12, recommend budget amendment 2014-141 in the amount of $11,497 recognizing insurance claim payments for fire vehicle repairs due to April 29, 2014. Flood and allocate the expenditure in the self-insurance fund. I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item 13, recommend budget amendment 2014-142 in the amount of $47,233. Transferring funds from the Capital Fund to the General Fund for replacement pickup truck for Building Maintenance Department and passenger vans for Parks Department. I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item 14, recommend budget amendment 2014-143 in the amount of $241,577. Carrying forward Roan Bridge funds for the compact track loader at $77,799 as approved at the June 12, 2014 meeting, and for two passenger vans at $59,020, and one crew cab pickup truck, three four-wheel-drive pickup trucks at $78,012. I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Item 15, budget, recommend budget amendment 2014-144 in the amount of $45,148. Transferring funds from the Capital Fund to the General Fund for one gas vehicle pickup and Animal Control Body for Animal Service Department. Do so without objection.
And prove, but we just transpose the last two digits, it's 84 and 48. I do that all the time myself. Yeah. It's as printed. All right.
Item 16, budget, recommend budget amendment 2014-145 in the amount of $60,000. Transferring funds from the Capital Fund to the General Fund for replacement of one truck in engineering and two trucks in mosquito control. I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
And the final item is county, recommend county expenditure and check register, which I've signed off and turned into your, to the chairman's office. I do so without objection.
Here, none passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes Budget and Finance Room.
Thank you, Commissioner. County Administrator?
Yes.
County Attorney? Public Forum? Anybody here wish to bring anything before the Board before we adjourn?
Yes, sir. Name and address, please, sir, for the record. Push that right-hand button. It's a split button. The right-hand part, I would turn your red light on.
Yes, sir. My name is Jack Freck. I live at 7400 Bernadette in Navar, and I have some property down, and this Barbarosa Ranchettes that we are discussing the MSBU on. And we can't even get down that road. It's just a dirt road. But there are about 10 houses on the road that are quite nice houses, and they, they don't even, they can't even get to their houses. And I can't get to my lots because the road is so bad. I'm wondering, every time it storms bad, the county road grader goes right past our street, right down to Spruce Street and grades it. It's in within spitting distance of us, but that grader can't come down our road.
May I interrupt you just for a moment, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Whitfield, is this a county-accepted road for maintenance?
No, sir.
Well, there's the answer. It's a private road, sir, and we can't work on private roads.
But we're, we're all paying taxes.
Well, sir, I'll let Mr. Whitfield speak to that because it's his area of expertise. Mr. Whitfield?
The area is, they're public roads because they're, they're platted. It's platted as a subdivision, but those public roads have never been, they've been accepted by the, for public use, for public access, ingress, egress. But those roads have not been accepted by the Board of County Commissioners for maintenance because they've never been brought up to any county standard, even back when the roads were first put in, I suppose. They never met the standards that were in effect at that time. Certainly, the one reason the county can't just simply take over maintenance of roads like that is the precedent it would set because there are many, many miles of those roads all over the county. It would be quite a burden on the taxpayers for the county to have to go in and accept below-standard roads.
Could your department prepare statements so this gentleman will understand and maybe could talk to his neighbors about what would be required to bring it up to standards so it could accept it for maintenance? Could you work with him on that?
Certainly, we could work, between Public Works and Engineering, we could provide the standards that would have to be met, yes.
Give you, give you a roadmap of what you would need to do, you and your neighbors collectively, to get the road up to standards, and then you could bring that back to us for acceptance. But barring that, there's, other than that, there's not much we can do to help you.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, sir. We will, if you will, make sure you give your name and address to the young lady right there and a way to contact, your email or whatever, someone will be in touch with you regarding your requirements.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have anything they wish to bring before the board before we adjourn? All right, see, none here, none, we are adjourned.